...City Council's water. You would all please rise and join us in the flagrant meeting. Thank you all very much. It's good to see everybody. The court will now call the roll.
Councilmember South.
Chair.
Councilmember Westy.
Here.
Councilmember Grimmer.
Here.
Councilmember Patel.
Here.
Councilmember Heinz.
Here.
Councilmember Luther.
Here.
Councilmember Norris.
Here.
Councilmember Hood.
Here.
We have all eight councilmembers present tonight. Good to see everybody. We are now down to item D, the agenda to approve approval.
Second.
Motion made by Councilmember Heinz. Seconded by Councilmember Luther to approve tonight's agenda. Any comments, questions, suggested changes? I have one. We're going to have a presentation quickly tonight as well from the Historical Commission on a couple of upcoming events that they're going to have. And we'll bring them up at the end of public comments. So with that, those in favor of tonight's agenda, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Standing. Motion carries. We have a couple cards here tonight. We'll start out with Mike Jensen. Mr. Jensen.
Hi, Mr. Jensen. One, two, four, two, three, four. In the drawing room, this is great. So that's meeting and talk about missions that the members of Congress, the House, the Senate, and the House of Representatives and the Senate. And I recently saw a conference before, um, about forty-four people pass away from cancer in St. George. I went by the day, thirty-four of our sir. I know that someone passed away from cancer. And then, uh, my mother is a care of her. And they've been friends that long for, I don't know, forty years. She also passed away. And I know some other people that have hardly talked to their parents or relatives who have passed away from cancer. But I just want to share that with the council. And, um, you have your time here to speak. Please speak in the microphone. Obviously, what these, what do the council people do? It's really helpful. Thank you very much.
How nice to duly notice. Next card we have is from Melissa Mitchell. Melissa Mitchell.
Good evening, Melissa Mitchell. One, two, seven, five, eight, Sam, come on in here. Um, because I knew I wasn't going to be able to make this part of the last meeting, I had sent an email to, um, Councilman Grimmer on some concerns that I had looking at whether we could add to the meeting and get on record last time. And that didn't happen. Um, however, in, uh, in Councilman Grimmer's behalf, he did do, uh, some due diligence and response. But I want to get my concerns on record. Um, and there was, there were files on total. So regarding this, this St. George playground operation, the first question I had was, has soil been tested for any radio contamination, radioactive contamination? And the response that, um, that area from Christian, um, was that soil samples and several dust samples were collected. This goes back to November of two thousand and fifteen. It was tested again in two thousand and sixteen and seventeen and found no contamination, along with, um, testing two, uh, yards in St. George that had no contamination. Life has changed in eight years. And there, I shared with you that my house is extremely contaminated with Thorium and perchim. And I'm in St. George, so not sure where this is from. Um, and then the question was, if not, will it be disturbing, um, the ground? Um, so based on the data from the soil and dust samples collected in two thousand and fifteen and the same from two residents in St. George, the EPA did not feel that, uh, there are radiological contaminants that they would be observing in, uh, working as a playground. Then regarding the St. George road repairs and parts of St. Charles Rock Road, particularly around St. Charles Rock Road M two seventy, where the surface is tested, and EPA comes back into the state does not perform any radioactive testing, and doesn't believe it's necessary based on sampling discussed in the request to motion one. Um, where is all the concrete waste when we dumped was my question, and they said this is not with EPA's side related, um, or they're not doing anything. And one of their questions to that was, will testing for radioactivity performed at the dumping location to ensure the city of Bridgeton, if it's being helped in Bridgeton, doesn't end up with another flashlight somewhere else in operation of contaminating concrete? Um, and again, the EPA is not qualified in that, so they're not going to do much thing. Regarding the QT fuel station, um, that we've been talking about, let's take Victor, wanted to know, had any of that soil been tested? And they said that they were not, EPA says they are not aware of any tests for radioactive contamination being conducted. And the data collected today says that radio, radiological contamination has migrated off site in this area. Therefore, EPA has no claims to conduct testing. And I'm kind of paraphrasing, but I have a copy of this that I can
Yeah, you could, Melissa. That'd be great after you're done with your
Yeah, yeah. I just have a couple more things. Then I noticed that Republic, although it looks very nice, they added a burn around the old Baker Farm and added trees and bushes and its, um, seating. But again, my question was, the soil that was tested was test tested, and the EPA did not require any radius radiological sampling of the soil. So who knows where that soil came from? Uh, and then lastly, um, I pointed out that there is a sidewalk on Baker Road from the quick trip up to Hollenberg Drive. And it's dry as ever. We wouldn't know it's there because it is overgrown with bushes and grass. Now, um, thanks to Councilman Grimmer, the grass has been cut, but not had the ability of that sidewalk. But bushes are so overgrown along that sidewalk, it still feels most of it unusable. And the question I add on to that is, now that we have businesses going down to corporate exchange, and we have people that hate the bus, and they walk on Baker Avenue, corporate exchange to get to their jobs, and I see them regularly when I'm coming from work, is there, or should there be plans to extend that sidewalk at least all the way to, um, to forest or, because these people end up having to walk in the streets and traffic, you know? We try to be very concerned, but it is up here and down to make them walk in the street. Those are my comments. Um, I will wish you a clean county because this is not well over and handed to Karen by the end of the meeting.
You could. That'd be great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Normally, we do not respond to public comments. So you can respond later. Okay, next one. Kyle Boji.
Thank you, Chris, and the City Council members and Mayor for allowing me to speak. My name is Kyle Boji. Kyle, this is four, two, one, seven, Carrollton Drive, in the city of Carrollton Village condominiums, Bridgeston, Missouri, since March of two thousand and fifteen. I was fortunate to buy a condominium in this complex with housing and urban development program at that time. I felt I bought a property that I could live in well within what I received in monthly income as a single person that had recently retired. I have discussed my and other owner's vision by phone with Councilmember, Mr. Randy Heinz. He has been helpful and listened to my concerns, but I appear here tonight on my own behalf. I believe that it is important to share that we've taken place in Carrollton Village since two thousand and twenty. Regarding finances and decision making, I vote AMC Management and the Carrollton Village Board. I will mention no names here. Also, please note, AMC Carrollton Village Board, a council, a two thousand and twenty-two annual meeting with owners to discuss financial matters, board elections, and moving an update on who are the two thousand and twenty-three board members, and open discussion for owner's questions. I myself had written responses intended to hand deliver to each board member, and the AMC property manager, regarding the November ninth, two thousand and twenty-two letter sent to me by the Carrollton Village Board. They held no meeting. There has not been an in-person meeting in Carrollton Village since two thousand and nineteen. In two thousand and twenty, Carrollton Village owners received a ten percent increase in assessment fees. Then in July of two thousand and twenty, a special assessment for approximately thirty-six thousand dollars for building flooding, the grid and trash fees, which were temporarily ending on January one, two thousand and twenty-one. I requested building statements and the address of the flooded buildings. Request ignored by AMC. AMC listed tragic, tragic spend in the two thousand and twenty-one yearly budget. In November of two thousand and twenty, owners received a thirty percent increase in assessment fees, which the pool listed as a larger expense. The country was in a COVID-nineteen pandemic with the economy reeling during the summer of two thousand and twenty. AMC, the Carrollton Village Board, elected to operate the pool with full maintenance from a pool company at owner expense. The pool was closed for the summer due to COVID. Now, with a forty percent increase during the summer of two thousand and twenty-one, AMC and the board again operated the pool the entire summer with full maintenance as if the pool was being used for swimmers every day. After watching this for the second year, is the pool still operating on September thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-one? I emailed AMC Management with a complaint that this pool should have been covered and not in operation the past two summers. I have photos of other condominiums still as pools, two located five minutes from Carrollton Village color. AMC property manager sent me an email on September fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-one, with many excuses, none of which I agreed with, and clearly pointed out, we have not covered the pool in years. AMC Carrollton Village Board never has covered the pool in the off seasons. I have voted the power to care for it when not in use all winter and spring for two thousand and twenty-two. Owners received an eight percent assessment fee increase. Letter signed by the AMC property manager. In two thousand and twenty-one, emailed to me, he noted AMC has nothing to do with any C increases, yet he's signing off on increased letters. Owners now during the COVID-nineteen pandemic, many of this month's mancom, such as myself, is carrying a forty percent increase in assessment fees. I have several examples raised in issues with. How the AMC Carrollton Village Board were excessively charging residents with increased fees and not receiving services for these increases, I can provide anyone with a sample. I can prove through my own documentation regarding AMC the Carrollton Village Board, there is no accountability in standing and in any way. I'm not charged regarding any issues, financial questions I have brought to their attention.
Mr. Boji, you have your, your, your five-minute mark, so you need to wrap up here pretty quick.
Okay, I
If you have written statements you're glad that that's due us.
Yes, I can submit it.
Okay.
I have approximately, uh, probably two minutes.
Now, yeah, you're getting to five minutes mark already.
I'll bring, I'll bring it up at the end of the
You would, sir. That'd be great. Thank you very much. Okay, as I mentioned, we have the members of the Historical Commission here, the current chairperson Kathy Corver, and Judy Meyer, longtime commission member. Later.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of the council for lending. Um, I was recently appointed as chair of the Historical Commission, hoping to find out what we are working on, and invite you home to the upcoming events that we have scheduled. Um, we have a twenty home project, twenty home flat project, where we have identified about eight, eighteen houses in the city of Bridgeton that were built a hundred more years ago. And we have a flat that we didn't even show in the quarter, um, that we have called, um, conjunction housing on the way, um, showing that it was built in eighteen seventy. And this Sunday, we will be unveiling inside of there. And we have invited, we received two, six funds from property owners that they would be getting a new flat for their houses, and, um, we invited those people to attend this Sunday event. Um, you are all invited to attend, and I think we'll be first. And in September, the first Sunday in September, September third, um, one of the people who was assigned to the original owners was, um, Tom Mason, and he was actually heard as Grand Master of three different firms. And, um, we have one of our future members, her husband, here is the name, and so he's the reason we have members from Bridgeton Lodge to come up and do a little presentation, and she invited this in the other as well. And then on September nineteenth, we have a secret series. We're inviting various people to come see. Um, Jesse Francis, who is the cultural site manager at Science Park, will be the speaker. And this is September nineteenth, it's a, um, I think that's Tuesday, that's Tuesday, and, um, I've asked you to, um, to circulate some invitations to all of you for them. But Jesse will be working with the mayor and the city on getting the log gem we instructed next to the King of the House. So his seat, his seat should be pretty interesting, um, on this about what he has done in Science Park and other places. So, um, other things we're working on is getting prison ornaments and refrigerator magnets and possibly postcards for the King of the House so we can tell them. And I understand that you all are looking at promoting bridges, um, incorporating law enforcement times for taking to that aspect, and we highly recommend that you can do that. And if you can give any help on that, please let us know. Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate all the work the Historical Commission provides. But what's the time, the time is on there, Judy?
Yes.
Okay. So hopefully, some of the councilmembers can attend the event as early as this Sunday at one o'clock. All right. There are no other cards here, so we will move on to approval of the minutes, item F, and these are the council meeting minutes of July nineteenth. Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made by Councilmember Hood. Seconded by Councilmember North for approval of the July nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-three meeting minutes. Are there any comments, questions, suggested changes? Standing up, those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Standing. Motion carries. We're very pleased tonight we have joining us the Bridgeston Police Explorers. And I take the police chief and Jen and some of the other officers, they're kind of going to walk us through a little bit about what the program is. Yeah, come on up.
Mayor, members of the city council, thank you for having me here tonight and, uh, giving us an opportunity to recognize our police explorer scouts. Um, we have, uh, Jen Irvin here, Tim Miller from the Police Department, uh, Black Lord Scouts. I know there's a lot of the parents here too, um, representing and supporting the child. Um, I just wanted to tell you that, uh, on July twenty-sixth through the twenty-second, marked an eventful and enriching week for the police explorer. They participated in the prestigious annual law enforcement explorer academy with its help at Lindwood University in St. Charles. With dedication and enthusiasm, the explorers' owners skilled invaluable knowledge and showcased their abilities in a series of rigorous competitions. These competitions demanded the utmost precision teamwork, quick thinking, and they were judged on various aspects of law enforcement. The Christian Police Department Explorer Post demonstrated exemplary performance. Their hard work and determination were rewarded by remarkable achievements, securing three, uh, top three positions in four separate competitions. They got first place in interview and interrogation, second place in arrested search, second place in burglary and building searches, and third place in accident investigation. I'd like to congratulate the Bridgeston Police Department and the scout and the Bridgeston staff that helped get them to where they're at. Um, they showed remarkable performance in a short period of time, I think, what, six months generally, had the training to prepare for this. And I can't tell you how proud I am of not only my staff, but the explorer scouts. And I want to shout out also to the parents, with the support and dedication. Uh, I truly believe in you, our future leaders in law enforcement and our future first responders. I congratulate all of them for an outstanding job in representing the city and law enforcement exploring as a whole. So I just wanted to present to the council and let you know what my job is.
We did.
As the chief said, these paths are deeper later from law enforcement, living hard for you. That's why I say, for, that's why I say, okay, now, these are people that are coming to a lot of support. You know, we're not going to be here all the time. You can't just walk in line. So I applaud them for their effort, and I met those parents, and they gave one of the people the police commission meeting. We very much appreciate what they do and appreciate the fact why the parents did this. Congratulations, all.
All right. Moving on, we're to item eight from tonight's agenda, resolution twenty-three oh five. Councilmember Patel.
Thank you, Mayor. Move for consideration of resolution twenty-three oh five.
Second. Motion made by Councilmember Patel, seconded by Councilmember Grimmer for the approval of resolution twenty-three dash oh five. Councilmember Patel.
A resolution of the mayor and the city council of the city of Bridgeton, Missouri, supporting the Parks and Recreation Department's planning grant application through the Municipal Park Grant Commission for renovations at Centri Park.
Move for approval.
Move for approval.
Which we did. So the comments or questions? Standing on the court will call the roll.
Councilmember Westy.
Aye. Yes.
Councilmember Grimmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Patel.
Aye.
Councilmember Heinz.
Aye.
Councilmember Luther.
Aye.
Councilmember Norris.
Aye.
Councilmember Hood.
Aye.
Councilmember Patel.
Aye. If they have voted aye to nothing, you approve resolution twenty-three dash oh five. And that'll be very beneficial to the Parks Department. I kind of skipped over something after the presentation on our explorers and that is appointments I laid out for the council two appointments, one to the Historical Commission of Nick Pickman from Ward Four, and the one on the Pension Commission of Ryan Moser, also off of Ward Four. I would hope council would approve those.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion made by Councilmember North, seconded by Council member Hood for the approval of the two previously noted appointments. Were there comments or questions? Standing on those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Standing. Motion carries. I will still have some more with, uh, four commissions maybe that we have some vacancies on, mostly in beautification, historical, pension has one, I think, and senior service. Can work on all those. Someone needs to put you in, please. Raise your right hand. Someone is sorry to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Yes.
Please state your name and address.
Senator, I'm a local sheriff of the city of Bridgeton, one, two, three, five, five, and Bridgeton, Missouri, six, three, zero, four, four.
Please proceed.
Thank you. I do have a, this is a city exhibit, uh, record. These include a copy of the report to the mayor, city council, and the planning commission dated June twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-three, a copy of the staff report to the planning commission dated July sixth, two thousand and twenty-three, a copy of the planning commission minutes from there July sixth, two thousand and twenty-three minutes, a copy of the site plan for those projects, and by reference order number seventy, that's twenty-five, with amendments through May seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-six.
It's the orders that such exhibits are included in the record of the seat.
Thank you. I've just got some compliance with the summary of the report and the document that the commission took on this request. So this is an application to twenty-three dash two, two dash zero nine. This is an application to amend the special use permit, amend special use permit approved by order fourteen, dash thirteen, and the request is related to expanding the existing convenient core building that's associated with the automobile service station, which is one, two, two, one, eighteen, Charles Rock Road, property is known V two, continues this district. The planning commission of the public area is under application of their July tenth meeting and reference approval with conditions by a vote eight to zero. Uh, just a few comments about the property itself. It states it's known V two. The property is just under one acre. The building has twenty-three square feet. The proposal is to, uh, build an expansion of approximately fourteen hundred square feet. The property is surrounded by mixed commercial land uses, including retail, office space. It is located at the corner of McKelvey Road and St. Charles Rock Road. The property is surrounded by V two zoning to the northeast, south, west, and west across McKelvey Road, which is by the nineteen commercial district. Ingress, ingress to this site, there's a right in, right out on McKelvey Road, a right in, right out on St. Charles Rock Road, and then there's also additional access, shared access, uh, from this property that dates in through the southeast. Uh, just a little bit of background information. Uh, so I mentioned this is an amendment to previously approved special use permit. So the first special use permit was approved in nineteen seventy. This was the original special use permit, always facilitation. In nineteen ninety-four, the special use permit was amended to have car wash, which is still in operation. And then in two thousand and fourteen, it was amended to allow for the sale of packages, liquor. This is, this amendment is specifically for the expansions of all the previously approved special use permits would remain intact. Regarding the current plans, the protocol is consistent to future land use, and that was supposed to be a commercial. And again, the, the landing is not supposed to change, it's just the expansion. Uh, regarding the traffic generation, uh, this building general traffic increase with two per cuts, these things, ingress, ingress is sufficient. The parking remaining compliance is as known ordinance. This area is surrounded by mixed commercial land uses. One thing I want to mention also, um, the opportunity to mention when we discussed the planning mission meeting, uh, and it's in the material as well, part of the recent expansion is just to, uh, allow for larger retail space, specific cooler space. They also mentioned that they would add a food court area, similarly you might see at QT. They also mentioned that, um, there's currently a restroom that is access to the outside only, so it's hard to, to control that. So the addition also includes two restrooms that would be accessible inside only. Here's the summary. Here's a summary of the recommended conditions that the planning commission recommended approval of. Just to summarize them generally, the amended special use permit will be listed to the expansion of the site plan, existing land use approved, approved under previous special use permits and tax. Off street parking areas shall be kept creative, trash and litter paid purposes shall be maintained in good condition with accurate data marking. Planning shall comply with the time regulations of the city of Bridgeton as well as approved by the county review board. I've got a few pictures of the site. This is from the intersection of McKelvey Road and St. Charles Rock Road. This is from across the street, right there in the middle, the one main right in, right out on St. Charles Rock Road. And this is from, this is the backside, this shows essentially where the expansion will be located on the left-hand side, that's the, the car wash. And here's a screenshot of the site plan and screenshot of the floor plan. One I might just also want to mention, since this came up at the planning commission meeting, there was a little bit of discussion about how currently there, there are access between the building and the car wash and the planning disaster that was issued. This does, this was distributed to as a prior district, and their main concern is as long as they have access to the building, that's all that's the main concern. There is no requirement of ordinance that access be provided behind the building. There's still sufficient access along the front side of the building, uh, even with the expansion and the support. Are there any questions?
Are there questions, Mr. Gray? From council? Seeing none? The petitioner present tonight? Petitioner here tonight?
Yes.
Do you want to say anything? I need to swear your hand. Please raise your right hand. Solid swear yourself the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. Please give us your name and address, sir.
My name is Aron Louie, and the address, uh, located in 12218 St. Charles Rock Road.
Very good, sir. Proceed. Do you have anything you wanted to add to it?
I just wanted to get the use permit, uh, this is a cover time, so we can, uh, file up the security.
Okay.
And, uh, the reason we are doing this is because we're feeding this question and we're very small, and so there are new products, you know, which we want to bring to the store and, uh, and bring the restroom inside, but we had very big problems with the restroom. Some people were going for the outside, you know, and they were putting needles and everything in the boards, so we tried to bring the restroom inside. And, uh, I do want to say a little bit.
Very good. Questions of the applicant or the petitioner? We have one. Councilmember Grimmer?
Yes, looking at the plans, the pumps are pretty well the existing, they're going to stay where they are.
Yes.
Okay, that's all I have. Thank you.
Yes.
Oops. Councilmember Patel and then Councilmember Luther.
Me first, okay. Um, sorry about that. Um, no, you're, you're making it so they can't drive through with the petition by the car wash, and I know, uh, occasionally I would snowplow on the lot next door. Is there still going to be access, or you're not going to worry about anybody coming by your gas pumps to get over this vice versa, or from the, I guess that's a, an oriental restaurant right next door to you right there? Uh, is that still going to be okay to be accessed back and forth through that area right through there? And not, and not really be a conflict for you who are them? All right, that's all. Thank you.
Councilmember Luther?
Thank you.
Hold on.
All right, just have one question. You mentioned the food car. Could you just describe what, what you mean?
It's not a big food car, you know, maybe like car wash, you know, and stand here, you know? Right now we don't have that space, you know, in, in this store.
Good, thank you.
Councilmember Heine?
Yes, uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, being on, uh, planning zoning, I, I saw the, the plans before, I just want to point out, yeah, that there won't be one hundred percent access around the total building, uh, once the addition is put on. Is the car wash still fully functional?
It didn't either, right now, we're just apart, you know?
Oh, okay.
It's our problem right now, or it is.
Did you have plans on heating that, right? Not the knowledge?
Yeah, yeah, right now we have.
Okay. All right, uh, that's all I have. Thank you.
Very good. Saying no further questions. Thank you, sir.
Take it, take it, go.
Is there anyone in the audience who would care to speak in favor, in favor of this proposed request for a special use permit? Seeing none? Anyone here who cares opposition, in opposition of this special use permit, 23 PZ dash oh nine? Seeing none? We will close the public hearing. Thank you very much. Thank you. All right, we will move back to the regular agenda once again. And we are on permit waivers and appeals, item J, which is a liquor license change of ownership, and that goes to Councilmember Heine.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, motion for second consideration of liquor license for Pirates Co., uh, it's Old Pirates TNR LLC doing business with Pirates Co.
Second. Motion made by Councilmember Heine, seconded by Councilmember Luther for second consideration of the liquor license and change of ownership.
Yes, David, yeah, this is change of ownership, uh, so the, the applicant has to apply for a license in his name. Uh, the applicant who's here with us, um, I do recommend that we pass this. This is for buy the drink, liquor by the drink, Monday through Saturday, and also Sunday sales by the drink. Uh, this is located at ten seven thirty-one Margate Hall, right at Whitehall Manor and Limburg. Motion to approve.
Second. Motion made by Councilmember Heine, seconded by Councilmember Luther to approve the liquor license due to change of ownership. Were there further comments or questions from council? Seeing none, the court will call to roll.
Councilmember Grimmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Patel?
Aye.
Councilmember Heine?
Aye.
Councilmember Luther?
Aye.
Councilmember Norris?
Aye.
Councilmember Hood?
Aye.
Councilmembers Patel?
Aye.
By your vote of eight to nothing, you approved the liquor license due to change of ownership for the Old Pirates TNR LLC doing business with Pirates Co. We are down to item N tonight, consideration of new bill, bill number sixty-three eighty-eight. Councilmember Heine?
Thank you, Mayor. Motion for first reading of bill number sixty-three eighty-eight?
Second. Motion made by Councilmember Heine, seconded by Councilmember Luther for the first reading of bill six-three eight-eight. Those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Standing? Motion carries. Councilmember Heine?
An ordinance of the city council, the city of Bridgeton, Missouri, application number twenty-three dash PG dash zero-nine, amending special use permit fourteen dash thirteen to expand the existing convenience store building associated with the automobile service station located at twelve two-one-eight St. Charles Rock Road. Move to table.
Second. Motion made by Councilmember Heine, seconded by Councilmember Luther to table, bill six-three eight-eight. Those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Standing? That motion carries. We are to bill six-three eight-nine, again, Councilmember Heine.
Motion for first reading of bill number six-three eight-nine?
Motion made by Councilmember Heine, seconded by Councilmember Luther for the first reading of bill six-three eight-nine. Those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Standing? Motion carries. Councilmember Heine?
An ordinance of the city council of the city of Bridgeton, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement substantially in the form attached here too with pro puro signs incorporated for the procurement and installation of an LED double-sided display sign for the exist, existing monument at the government center in the amount of fifty-five thousand, two-hundred, fifty-eight dollars and zero cents, with a contingency in the amount of five thousand dollars even. Motion to move to table.
Second. Motion made by Councilmember Heine, seconded by Councilmember Luther to table, bill six-three eight-nine. Those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Standing? Motion carries. We are down to attorneys' report?
I have nothing, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor communications, we'll start with Councilmember Hood.
Okay, I had the privilege of, uh, attending the designer review meeting last night, and I wanted you to know that, uh, the solar panels were approved on Falcon and that the, uh, sign package for Chick-fil-A was approved.
Very good.
Other than that, that's it.
All right. Councilmember Norris?
I do have one thing.
No.
You look straight at Dave.
I don't have too many pages. Um, I guess really I want to congratulate, uh, our future explorers, our future police. I wish them good luck and to their families, all the hard work. Um, I do hope I see them, um, and it is such a privilege to be able to meet them. Um, gosh, they're getting young. Um, I'm getting old, so, anyway, um, but, uh, really getting back serious, um, DePaul Hospital decision regarding that trauma, um, center affected September tenth is very disappointing, but I know it's business. Um, I hope they could reevaluate this plan. Um, my question is, um, if you can find out, um, what is the difference? Is it just going to be emergency care, uh, for that hospital? Um, I know they have, they will still continue with something, uh, with stroke and, uh, heart attacks, so would that be a trauma center of, you know, there is differences in the trauma, but, uh, I do will let you, emergency care is broken bones, chest pains, loss of consciousness, um, minor burns, minor lacerations requiring stitches, severe abdominal pain, uh, signs of a heart attack and signs of a stroke. Emergency treats, many common conditions ranging from, uh, so non-life threatening. A difference is a trauma center, that's what's kind of bothering me. Trauma units have the resources and expertise to handle more extreme cases when immediate survival is a concern. So I would like to see if we can find out some answers from DePaul. I'd appreciate that for our community. Um, I also want to thank goodness the storm on Saturday, I know it did cause some, uh, electrical problems, but not as severe as the, the holiday weekend. And I do, uh, I love our city parks, glad we are supporting the, the grant procedure for Gentry. Um, and also I do have just a question about a business, uh, in the area of Bonville, just right down the street. There's a commis, commissary and I guess a dump state here, but there's multiple food trucks parking behind this business. Is that their business or, um, I just would like to know if that's a, if that can be an answer. And, um, also I do, I just, I drive through the West Haven subdivision, um, and I just was wondering if that Easy Market, um, something with these dumpsters, I mean, they're obviously open. Don't we have an ordinance that we have to have them enclosed, especially at that Easy Market? The dumpsters are right in front, right on our Limburg Boulevard, so I'm wondering if some of that might be causing some of our, if the, if the lids are coming with such wind we're having. So I just was wondering if there was something we could do about enclosing the dumpsters. All right. Sorry, thank you very much, I only had a few, so appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you for your brevity. Uh, Councilmember Luther?
Our chairman, you think, uh, thank you, Mayor. Thank you to everyone who's here, uh, thank you for coming, congratulations to the explorers and also to the parents and to the police department who put that together. It's just wonderful. You couldn't see how their heads were down, so happy and sweetly, uh, so they were very moved to be here and keep the standing ovation with, with both of you. Also, congratulations to the cargo commission, my goodness, they are moving and grifting and breaking, can't wait to see it from black homes and houses. I did want to, uh, Randy will allude to this, we had a board three meeting, one of four that we have a year, uh, in this area room last week. We, um, I want to thank Chief Masada for attending and answering, talking a bit, answering some resident questions. Uh, Randy has provided a schedule for upcoming meetings that is included in the question that we talked more about the meeting. Uh, we have prior to this meeting, our monthly, third monthly code meeting, code ordinance violation enforcement meeting. Really, we should, we may rename that as a compliance meeting. Uh, because of some of our compliance with our ordinance system, everything that we can do as residents, as council members, working with town and with our police department to ensure that people know when we're really focused at this point on property, but also businesses, what we need to do to be a, uh, a respectable citizen and property owner in Bridgeton. So we're working through that. We have our municipal judge, Special Lewis, who attended this evening, uh, we had his photo, that was kind of very short, talking to us about the kinds of things that come across his desk. We've all agreed, everything we're focusing on compliance is the name of the game. So as we look forward, we meet every, uh, six P M, the, on the first city council meeting on November twenty-third, and we're welcome to attend. Uh, we're moving forward and trying to decide what the outcome and output will be from this council meeting. And guys, it's lots of good information, so I want to thank our enforcement officers and crime, uh, Robert's team, I noticed he has two looking at this and responses to resident complaints that we passed on. Uh, and some of them I, I will pass along, I've gotten a few recently, uh, some about baleen trees, uh, in Eastman areas. I've checked this area, the bigger area out, I haven't seen these trees, and I'm recognizing that we had two down, we had to take some down on my property. I'll pass them along. Feeding at the top of Avery has been a concern, and it's been, I think maybe might be one or two of the same people doing that, that, uh, residents are reporting very quickly on the top of this. And we also, I have also over the past few months, I know that for Randy and I, I've started complaining about Mo Doc property, that either a box to a, a personal home or a, that is visible, uh, adjacent to, uh, any of our trees, so I think that's a bigger issue, uh, coming from different directions. So I want to thank you again for the opportunity to speak. Thanks, love you.
Thank you. Councilmember Heine?
Thank you, yes, I was going, um, thank you all for being here tonight, and, um, nice to see everybody. Um, and a little bit more about, uh, Ward Three meeting, there was a couple things that constituents brought to us that we'll be addressing, uh, in the coming days with, uh, public works and, uh, and the police department. Um, uh, thank you, Chief Masada, for the assistance with the non-conformant commercial truck across the street last week. I appreciate your help. I know Fanny has been working on this for a while, and I'm glad it's, uh, come to a conclusion now. Um, and, uh, Mr. Boji, thanks for coming out to speak. Uh, do stick around and if you, uh, have some council members here that want to talk, I'm sure that you'll be able to, uh, answer some of their questions. I did speak with them at length about an hour and a half, uh, oh, about a week and a half ago, and, um, I spoke to, uh, Kevin Hookout, uh, about the situation, and we agreed it was a, a civil matter, but, uh, I want to find out some more information. I know that, uh, he plans on contacting, uh, maybe some news stations to get some, uh, media coverage from the HOA over there. And, um, also I did provide him with a couple of, uh, referrals for, uh, attorneys that specialize in HOAs and, uh, yeah, that might be able to help him also. But, uh, we had our, um, mayor, council, uh, compensation subcommittee meeting, uh, after our photo session tonight, and, uh, it was myself and council members, uh, Becky Fadel and, uh, Stephen Westy, uh, it went very well, but we met for about thirty minutes. And, uh, the next council meeting will be, be bringing, uh, three proposals on possible levels of increase for council to vote on, and if I could hit a discussion item, um, for that on the next agenda, that'd be great. Uh, we did find out that there has been an increase for the judge, uh, since the two thousand two mayor and, uh, council increase in compensation, so we need to talk with you further about that, Mayor, and see if you'd like this and discuss it more. Um, that's all I have. Uh, thank you for attending, um, and as always, if you have any questions of Ward Three or any other work, you can contact my little counsel, Kathy Luther, so, thank you.
Very good. Councilmember Westy?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, wanted to give a shout out to Public Works for taking care of a couple tree issue, our eight tree issue we had in, uh, the West Haven subdivision. Um, we ended up reaching out and you guys took care of it really fast, so thanks for doing that. I know it was a bit of a big tree, so it wasn't a sneezy task. Um, other than that, uh, that's it.
Very good. Councilmember Patel?
A few things here. First, I want to give a, a kudo thanks to our, Dave Limbrook, our attorney, for, uh, inviting us to his, uh, his suite down there at, uh, Bus Stadium. It was very enjoyable, even though the Cardinals lost. It was very enjoyable, even though the Cardinals lost, but it was, it was nice to be able to do that again and, uh, and enjoy the camaraderie of all of us together. Yeah, well, uh, we didn't have everybody there, but we tried to, and you had a great evening last night. Thank you very much on that part. Uh, the other thing I wanna bring up is the, the historical commission. I mean, they've all left already, but, uh, my wife and I have talked about this for quite a while, about having these centennial homes. Uh, my house is ninety-nine years old, and next year it will be a centennial home. And so, uh, I'm really glad they're moving forward with this. Thank you very much.
Very good. Counselmember Patel.
Thank you, Mayor. I have nothing.
Very good. Counselmember Grimmer.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I have a couple of items here. Uh, I'm gonna say the, uh, council and audience is, uh, I guess, uh, prescious in that when I reviewed the minutes, I reviewed everything except what I said. And I, I glanced down at that, and there was a statement that, that needs correcting, uh, in regards to the EPA meeting and what went on at their meeting, and the statement specifically, they advised that the excavation project was ninety percent completed and, was they advised that the planning for the excavation project will be ninety percent complete. There is no excavation whatsoever going on from the inside. And indeed, the next statement does say the next step is more planning for the other ten percent. So, we need to add, uh, in the minutes, the planning for the excavation project will be ninety percent completed.
That might require a second. I'll second that. I might need a second.
Motion's made. Seconded to amend the minutes of the meeting on a friendly amendment.
Yes.
Is that alright with everybody? So, move.
Aye.
Alright, very well. And secondly, I'd, I'd like to address the, uh, the comments
brought forth by, uh, Mrs. Mitchell, uh, regarding, uh, Spanish Village. Uh, there were five items brought forth, and there were the first, the first, the fifth one was sidewalk. We should talk about that, but what I really wanna talk about is that, uh, all four of those items of, just to, to paraphrase them, um, if they're read in, in their entirety, they could, uh, implicate or actually indicate that there is some radiological contamination, uh, in the Spanish Village subdivision. The reason I did not read that, or chose not to read that into, uh, the testimony in council was because of that reason. And I was well aware that EPA had done extensive testing, uh, and I forwarded that directly, uh, to the EPA, Region Seven, for response. They responded extensively, several paragraphs in which they, uh, basically recapped the testing of what they had done, and they had tested in fifteen, seventeen, and eighteen, and it was pretty extensive in the Spanish Village area. And paraphrase basically what they said, and they, no radiological elements, uh, radiologically contaminated elements beyond normal background radiation was found in Spanish Village, or any of the areas surrounded that. So, that's basically, uh, what they're responding to. And, and I have to go by the fact that, that, you know, these are experts, these people know how to test, they know what they're doing, and my, uh, my faith is put in the fact that they have basically said that there is no contamination there now. That's their position. Uh, it happens to be the position that I, that I, that I take for granted. Uh, and that's where I wanna leave that. So, I will add one thing, um, as you, uh, we all are aware, there is going to be some new playground equipment installed in the Spanish Village park, uh, and that will require some minor excavation. Uh, a request was, uh, was made that we do some testing because of the fact we're going to do some, uh, excavation there. A request was made that, uh, possibly we could test at that opportunity because we're gonna do some excavation anyway. Now, when I quoted that to EPA, I frankly expected a flat no. I mean, that's just the way they are dealing with that, that, that bureaucracy. It's pretty tough. To my great pleasure, they are entertaining the possibility, and we may have some additional testing just as an additional, uh, just some insurance that they are there. Now, they have to get the funding and the scheduling and have to dovetail with, uh, everything that we're doing, which we're gonna do this in August, as I understand, sometime this month, later?
Later, later in the fall.
Oh, later in the fall. Okay. So, it all has to be coordinated, but possibly, uh, just as an aside, we'll get some, one additional test here just to confirm that. So, um, uh, you know, again, I just wanted to explain the city side and my approach to that testimony, and anybody that wants a copy of how EPA responded, uh, to those, uh, those queries, those questions about the excavation, the materials, the concrete and so forth there, uh, I'd be happy to give them copies of the response that EPA made to it to six cents. Yes, there's Melissa's.
And I am submitting exactly what you said to me, unadmitted to, uh, the court.
And that's good. And, and, and that's good. So, it's, it's, uh, it is what it is. So, thank you.
Okay. We'll move on to department reports. We'll start with Mr. Gunn over in Public Works and Streets.
Concerning the commissary and the commissary premise, basically we had in the building that approved a future kitchen for these food trucks. When you come in with the food trucks, they can press their food for the weekend or at night, whatever event you're going to. And they'll be loads, their trucks, everything from paper refrigerators at all the facility into their food truck box for that day. So, it doesn't surprise me that you're gonna see food trucks there. Um, we will get, make sure that those trucks aren't there for the extended period of time, or make sure that some food there from that location is in the business we look for. And we'll check on the dumpsters down off one word.
Quick, you have anything else? Counselmember Hine.
Thank you. Um, concerning the food trucks, and maybe that business in particular, so, are they a retail business?
The commissary is, is where they get their food out and they store it. There's not a lot of selling food from those food truck type applications.
What, what, I mean, the actual building where the commissary is, is, are they, is it a retail business? Are they collecting sales tax?
I think this is approved. We can check on that. I believe this is a place where they prep their food, store their food.
So, it'd be wholesale?
I don't think they're selling there. It's pretty much a, like a Johnny Kitchen. They, they can't prep their food at their home because it wouldn't be, they have to go to locations that need stay for that kind of activity. So, they would prep their food for that, I am, I'm saying, or like that, it's just a place they store stuff or they can sell it.
When's the last time somebody went in and checked to see if it was sold to the public?
I, I can check and see, but we're not gonna look for that from public works, seeing as long as they have, uh, public safety and, uh, storage properly.
Okay. I'm just worried that we're missing out on some sales papers.
Okay. Counselmember Norris.
Yeah, I just wanted, uh, I guess they pay a service to rent that food and prepare. I guess that's their commissary.
They would use to have that food.
So, they, they pay a service to come in and cook their food and store their food?
I think they cook their own food. This is just a facility they go to, the apartment and store it.
But, so they're doing it for free?
No, you would pay rent if they're.
I'm sorry, I just, that's what I wanna hear from you. Okay. Alright, thank you.
Anything else in council? Mr. Gunn, you got anything else?
No, I don't have any.
Very good. Mr. Kane, Parks and Recreation.
I wanna mention with the Edinburgh Pool, we, um, had an emergency annual two week shutdown on the sixth through the nineteenth. Um, we do that every year for maintenance and cleaning. Uh, the Edinburgh Pool, most of the classes will be brought towards the two, uh, with interruption. Uh, also, wanted to mention a public information meeting will be held, uh, for general park renovations related to the, uh, resolutions through tonight, that's Thursday, August tenth, 6:00 PM. That'll be at the rec center. And we'll talk about the renovations being planned at the playground, restroom, and connecting pathways around the park area for, uh, goals to improve accessibility for, um, facilities.
Very good. Further comments, questions? Okay, Chief inside.
Just wanted to thank the council mayor for the kind recognition of, for the police authorities. I know it's a lot to them and the parents, so that's appreciated. Also, just a quick reminder, the breakfast with Badges event is gonna be, uh, at the rec center next Wednesday, August the nineteenth, from eight to nine-thirty, and moving forward to the officer meeting, uh, the community and business people from Christian. That's all I have.
Very good. Mr. Bookout.
I don't have anything there.
Okay. Briefly, I've got two things. One, at the next meeting, and council should have received, and the public can also get it, is the comprehensive annual financial report of the city for the fiscal year that ended December thirty-first, twenty fifty-two. People always ask, why did it take this long? I can tell you, though, they always do with accounts. Takes them six months to nine months to complete their work. Anyway, we won the presentation. At the next meeting, huh? Was wondering if you were listening. Uh, we will have a presentation from the accountant on the fiscal year report, and have some of the reports available if the public wants to, to have one. Also, a question came up about the DePaul Hospital. I do have a meeting later this week with some of the representatives in the area, as well as DePaul, uh, to discuss their discontinuation of trauma two services, because about that, this is the last hospital that offers that level of trauma care all the way up to Alton, and I'm not even sure in Alton they have. So, the only other hospitals that are available for trauma two in this area will be Mercy, which is down the road there on two seventy, Barnes Jewish down Kings Highway, and St. Louis U Hospital over on Grant, and that's it. So, it is something that we do have some concerns about, obviously, in particular for the level of care that residents, not just in the city of Bridgeton, but all of North St. Louis County with experience. With that, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
Question, here.
Second. Motion that you, Counselmember Luther, seconded by Counselmember Patel to adjourn. Counselmember Hood, did you have something?
Yes, sir. Were we going to talk about a possible Freeland pickup?
Freeland, oh, I'm glad you mentioned it. So, today was yard waste day in the city of Bridgeton for residents, so they swept through the regular haul. Depending on the storms, well, basically, we're gonna send the crews out tomorrow just to do a sweep of the city. Whatever didn't get picked up by the trash people, we will consider picking up there. But it'll only be two days. One of the things we have to remember with people is, we can't do it after every storm. And I, I understand, this was the severe storm that we had this weekend. I think the men was clocked at Lambert at seventy-nine miles an hour. That's Hurricane Four. So, we will go through and do it for just these two days, provided it's all brought out to the street. We're not gonna go in people's yards and pull it out. They have to bring it to the street corner, and we're only gonna do it Thursday and Friday. Whatever's left over from the trash hauler didn't pick up because people, for whatever reason, didn't put it in bags, or it was too big, we will do that, but that's it. Alright, thank you for reminding me. Appreciate that, Counselmember Hood. Motion's made. Seconded to adjourn. Those who voted signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Standing. Motion carries. We are adjourned.